Okay, well, everybody's here. Let's go ahead and call it to order at 5:29. And we are down to 27 that are incomplete or need some discussion. And then we also have the ones we've marked for needs review.
Well, I marked some for the attorney to look at.
So that's another grouping of 24 right there. So we've made improvements since last week. And I say we just dive into it unless anybody has a particular topic that we want to spend more time on. I made a note, the one to me that we want to be sure that we spend enough time on or that everybody's, we're clear on what they're asking about the changes to see if there's something that needs to be done now or if it needs to be addressed later is the one about mobile home parks and recreational vehicles. It's been kind of a hot topic, so making sure that we're up to date with that. But it probably can be addressed in five minutes because what they're asking and the breadth of that are not really the same specifically. But we can get to that in a little while. The first one here, we have... Reception. Come on. I should have brought my mouse pad down. She looked, could I get that for you? This one, no, it's okay, thank you. The first one, it's a comma. We, I think we all agreed last week, that was no question about that one. Amendment fine of a dollar. We went ahead and, we went back and forth and I marked that as completed. We don't need to review any further, but I just wanted to make sure I took the right notes of what everybody agreed. Okay. All right, so the first one that needs work is petitioning in the ETJ for expansion. This is when qualified voters would like to be included in the ETJ or bringing property in. They're just saying, they're just recommending that we might need to review our procedures. Is this something that we, that you already are working on? Because if not, we've added to our list of needs.
Yeah, so you, yeah, just mark it for me. Because yeah, with the, with recent code changes, there's specific documents in a very prescriptive way in which someone either comes in or goes out, et cetera, and I will just update it to reflect that. It's petition and you need, you know, it, it's very prescriptive and public hearings and things like that. And so with notice requirements, all referenced in 24.
Okay, thank you. City secretary, we talked about the appointment last week and the provisions for appointing, but we also marked it needs review. Anybody have further questions about that from last week? Since we said it doesn't need revisions, but we also marked it needs review. I just didn't want to take it off the list if we still have questions about that. That was the one where the city secretary could appoint somebody, but it doesn't take away the authority of the council with the city secretary. Okay, so we're gonna just change that one then.
I think you have to change it up at the top.
Have to unlock it.
Because you just put on there, do not revise.
Right?
Yeah.
But it's locked, which... But I'm signed in undermined, so I wonder why it's doing... Let me make a note. Moving down to boards and commissions. This is terminology references about boards and commissions. We noted that it needs review. In adding the EDCs, well, here, let me put it here because I think that would be more clear than needs review, right? We want to add the EDCs. And then we can get this off the list of things that... I'm being impatient, sorry. Agreed?
Agreed. If I don't want you locked, you cannot lock it.
Well, the admin should be able to unlock it, and I don't know why it's not doing that, but I'll ask her. I'll just call tomorrow about the ones if we have some. This one is about records management, and they're saying generally suitable for the most part, but if there are any recently enacted amendments to ETCA, local code. So I think that we have the, in mind that we should double check the government code with you, Philip.
Yeah, I'll do it in comparison.
To make sure we... All right, so we'll leave that on needs review. This is where we got into alcoholic beverages. And I think this one and the next one, like three in a row here, we marked all of those for needing review because it's referring to state law and code that have been updated since then. So those could stay with needs review. We're all the way down to... This one, they are really recommending that we review along with any current regulations.
That one's gonna be...
Health and safety code, rabies control. There is some more of this sort of thing about animals and wild animals and all that thing a little bit later in the code that we marked for review with Olson and Olson. But if you all think that you have a handle on this and it doesn't need to be with them, then that's fine with me too.
I would think that would, would apply directly to the, what they're already gonna be referencing, because I know the animal control will currently come to Barnes Road, but they won't come to Valley Lodge for nothing. Kind of go all hand in hand.
Okay, well, if there are statutory changes, we can... Just let me make sure we've got...
Sorry, Philip.
No, no.
You're already making the other changes, so...
If there are things he doesn't need to spend time on, let's take them off the list, but let's not be short sighted, is all. I don't want to take them off just for the heck of it.
Yeah, I think what they're saying with that one is that we, in the Simonton code, we reference saying, hey, the definitions as defined here is what we accept. And I'll just double check to make sure that there haven't been any significant changes or chapter revisions or, you know, once in a while something will come out from the Texas legislature that'll completely take away an entire chapter of code and rename it something else and just make sure it's staying in line with that.
Agreed.
That one you're on, Lori, is just real easy.
Yeah, it's super easy. I've marked it as revising as suggested. But for whatever reason, it's not giving us a green check mark, so we'll just, I'm gonna follow up about that and make sure. This is the one, I was talking about dangerous dogs and wild animals. This is another one that refers to the health and safety code. And just, we don't have any policy changes, I think, that we're expecting to make in this process, but we just want to make sure that we're within the right terminology of the codes.
Okay.
So let's go down to blood damage, blood damage prevention. There's one above it, so I don't skip over it.
That's the other easy one. Says you have to have a three-foot fence.
Now, is that true?
That's state law.
I thought they got rid of that.
It's state law, you're supposed to have a three-foot fence around it.
That leads...
This one, we expected this to stay because we want...
And your backyard fence counts.
It does count, as long as it's encompassing of that area.
Right, encompassing in at least three feet, et cetera, okay.
Now y'all can see on my tigers.
It's early night in the road, we've been here, we've heard sirens, very early on being here, it's kind of crazy.
This one is about establishing the area of special flood hazard. And basically, you know, the maps are not created by us, that's in Fort Bend County, so the chapter, we, it was amended in 2020 to refer to the flood insurance study and maps, but they've updated again since then. So this is one where we want to make sure that we've got the latest mapping and codes. So we know that for Olson and Olson, the correct version. Okay, I must not be getting all the way to the place, sorry. This one is also in flood damage prevention, pardon me. Our reference to the USC 1334 may need correction. They're asking us if it changed to the one that's referred.
Which means it's dredging now, 3444.
Yeah, to 1344. Is that something that is on the top of your head type of thing, Philip? Or shall we just send it to you?
We're not allowed...
We're trying to get to dredging or 16.
Do what?
We don't allow dredging or fill materials in properties without permits. It says to ensure that all necessary permits have been obtained, we don't allow dredging or unnecessary fill materials to be brought in.
That's true, but when you, we, we also refer to any other codes and statutes or laws or things, and so...
When the city, if it's correction, you can...
You can bring in fill that's engineered and, you know, up to a certain amount for leveling and that sort of thing. And this one is just, so just saying that if, if a federal permit was required or state, think about if this is in three years or five years or ETJ expands or there's something, it could, it might not apply today to the houses in Valley Lodge, but it could, so that's why it's included.
So is it question, is it question about the verbiage or the nomenclature about it? Because if it's...
I think it's, apologies, I think it's a question to the reference, because looking up 33, well, let me do 33 USC 1334, permit specific to, yeah, there isn't, it's 33 USC 1334. So I think it was just a...
Probably a typo.
Right, in essence, yeah, it's a clerical error, and so 33 USC...
Oh, it says it should be changed to 33, yeah.
Well, yeah, so 1344 specifically talks to permits for dredging or fill, fill material, which the ordinance itself isn't speaking towards dredging. And so what I would do is I will look and see...
How is it speaking to fill?
Yeah, I will look and see what it should be, because it's talking about duties and administration of flood pain administrator, which isn't going to deal with permitting for dredging necessarily.
Not dredging, but for fill it will.
Yeah, that's true, okay. So that may be the, just the reference, that maybe a three instead of four. So, yeah, I would review, but I think it's just changing to 1344 is all it's gonna need to, to actually update.
Basically, they're just saying enacted in 2007, do we need an update? We don't have a, we don't have a project, we don't have a, something going right now that would say, if we were gonna change it, it should be this. Do you want to...
Do the green spaces not fall into that? Just out of curiosity. Or could they, I guess, it's quite dated, however, those are possible projects going forward. I don't know if that would apply to that or not.
I guess my, I didn't probably say it well, cork me. I'm saying we don't have a definition that's ready to add at this point if we wanted to make changes.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
It's saying, do you want to delay until after this is published? Do you want to make it now? If there is something, we can sure do it, but I don't know if we're working on that.
Meetings attributed to them in this section, except, correct.
This is really pointed at developers or development, how it would get paid for and the rules of how they do it. You have to file a petition for consent before they can start the project and all the filing procedure and those sorts of things. There wasn't anything glaring in this when I read it, to me, but that's why I asked you all then. How they could be funded, all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the only question I had on that one was, again, the green spaces that are possibly available, condos way, way down in the future, but I would think that we could make a decision then.
Right.
We can revise anytime.
Who cau...
Well, yeah, it doesn't, again, you know, there's nothing pending, there's nothing right immediate, and so it's always something that could be updated by ordinance after March 11th if we're working towards sort of that. That what, you know, you read a code and it says, oh, what, we have to do backflips? I hate that code, you know, then let's take that out. If it's something glaring, if it's something that can be amended later to update, that's
This one is about septic systems, it's chapter 12, Philip. Basically, they're just asking us, does this need updating? Because they haven't been amended since 1981. Now, we haven't changed any rules or anything, but the county might have or the state might have.
The state, that is...
So it's referencing a few different health and safety code and things like that. So it might be a good idea to check those references.
Well, it looks like the only reference on there is that we have to have a different, or make sure rather, that the city requires a different type of septic tank system permit that is required by state law. So I would think you make the changes and follow the state law and, Jesus, since 1981? Good grief.
Yeah, they've gone from the field lines to the road system requiring all that. Well, the city defers to the county on this anyway, so just making sure that it matches.
Yeah.
That this code matches is...
You can get a county for me on that.
Mobile home park.
There it is. Dun, dun, dun.
So we're, in this section, there are, I think, are two questions here. And then when we get down to 16-001, there's a list of things that they're recommending you review. This one is just suggesting we want to review any provisions pertaining to mobile homes and manufactured homes. We can junction with chapter 16, which is the one that we're gonna look at in a minute. So if you would like, we can hold on this one and look at 16 and see if it looks like these would be worked on in conjunction with each other. Matter of fact, we could just go down. So this will list all the articles in this chapter, and they're recommending that we review all provisions in conjunction with any state and federal regulations and lists those chapters. There are lots of things that if you read this on its own, it makes you nervous because this is how you would have a home lot and this is how you would, and none of those things are currently allowed within the city limits, but still, we still have the language in there. So that's something that we didn't remove all of the definitions back when this was written, because you wouldn't. But again, we don't have a project that, or some sort of a change that we're working on now that's in process or coming immediately. So if we want to make changes to the overarching expectations about it or what the city wants or what homeowners would like to have in their area, so it's a little bit different than this where they're recommending that we might review all of the codes.
So the first part of that age of this... Chapter is manufactured housing parks. Second part of that chapter, code content, is manufactured housing and recreational vehicles. I think that might be where we want to look to just, to make sure, like we don't, I don't know what specific articles they're asking about that, because we could just come and, come back and say, no, we don't, we're not gonna do manufactured housing lots, but until zoning is done and all of that good stuff, I mean, does it really make it legal? Know what I mean? And I know that there are some mobile homes, I would think, at least.
There's some manufactured houses.
Yeah, there's some manufactured houses and definitely recreational vehicles for sure.
So here, here's the meat of the ordinance today within the city. It's unlawful for any person to place, use, or occupy a RV within the city limits unless such placement, use, or occupancy is authorized by the article. You can't permit, allow, or placement, somebody to do that.
So wait a minute.
Then you go...
Hold on. Hold on.
Exactly where she's going with this.
So to have a RV on my side lot, I have to have a permit?
Ma'am, hold please, no record may, no RV may be used for occupancy within the city.
You can't live in it.
It may be parked or stored outside the RV park so long as no one occupies it for use, no utilities, temporary or permanent, connected to the RV, and it's not parked on or extending over public property. An occupied vehicle may be parked or temporarily placed on property in private ownership for a period not to exceed seven days in a one-month period.
What?
So you can't live in it, but I could visit you and be in my RV for up to seven days.
Okay, if you have a trailer, this is not a RV, it's a, I mean, it's a trailer, bumper pull trailer. Parked at your house, you can't live in it, right?
Correct. You can't live in anything like a recreational vehicle, I guess, are you saying if I had a horse trailer with living quarters, I can't live in that?
Right. My God, shouldn't even be saying this, there's people who live next door to me who are doing that.
Well, that might be something we need to address.
I would, I would readily admit that, I mean, while this could be a super stupid hot topic because of the POA and everything else, this has been an issue since the whole flood started, like the flood started or whatnot, because it was overlooked for that period of time for obvious reasons, right?
That's exactly right.
But my question originally was whether or not it pertains to mobile parks. So the verbiage, the nomenclature, if you will, states outside of a mobile home park, which we do not have yet, not on good so far, that you can't do these things. We clearly know people are, so either we delete it or we revisit it or we change the verbiage to include it, I mean...
You are right. The city has not received a complaint about anyone living in an RV, so there hasn't been...
Because they're all going to the POA?
Okay, well, hold on a second. It's also the practice of the city to allow the POA to manage the things that are within the POA. This pertains to Valley Lodge, but it also pertains to any property that's in the city limits that's not in Valley Lodge.
I think, I think the simple question, while it does pertain to the city, is allotted in those one, that one little statement where it says outside of a mobile home park, because we don't have those. So it's up to poor people like yourself in the situation where you're getting all these complaints and you didn't know this existed, right? You could have said, hey, y'all have a city problem, not a POA problem, y'all got a city problem, you can't live in that thing anyway. You're not even supposed to be technically locked up to it, right? But in, it's become a her problem, unfortunately for her. And I think the wording is what they're asking us to question here, not the actual thing.
I think they're just asking if we want to make any updates in the answer, because it's written along on it.
Yeah, exactly.
It's still the reason it's on this project. If council wants to tackle this in a larger way, we could certainly do that outside of the E-code and do it, you know, after this is published.
Yes, please.
If you want to make changes. But I don't think you could be more of an expert. This was worded to include, you can't have it outside of a mobile home park or motor pump, whatever it said. RV park. Because that's kind of a standard thing. Like if I can't have it at my home, where could it be?
Licensed by the city as such.
But the city wouldn't license one under today's rules, but maybe the city would change their mind one day.
Well, but it goes right underneath that to say you can have them at your home.
It answers the question.
It defines the rules.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it defines the rules that outside of a park, you can't do it either, whether the city allows it or not. Outside of it, you cannot have it either.
Right, if the city has one, that would be something.
Why? Because they want to.
Okay, I don't want to...
Most of the time.
Yes, one second, ma'am. So council, if we could try to keep our, keep as narrow as we can to the E-code project, and if we want to bring this as a, this particular topic as something that needs addressing in the future, let's do that.
That's what I said, yes, please.
Yeah. Ms. Chaney?
So didn't that see answer to the question, why? Because when I get calls, right, and they do come in, what I call the dailies, the daily calls, and people are asking, because they sell mobile homes, manufactured homes, and they say, hey, I have a client that wants to buy a manufactured home and they want to come and buy a lot in Simonton. And I said, they're only allowed if the city had this kind of section, right, related to a park specifically set aside for that use. And right now, the city doesn't have that kind of use.
That's actually not true, because it's not a park, they are allowed in Valley Lodge. A manufactured home, is it allowed in Valley Lodge?
No, well...
There's a lot of manufactured homes in Valley Lodge.
There's a, there's a difference between something like a tilt wall kind of home that the Bohannians built and what we're generally talking about as a mobile home.
Yeah, but in answer to...
If she's referring to a mobile home, that is not allowed in the city of Simonton. This particular thing we're reading is about RV, but we have the same language for the mobile home in another section up here.
How old is this home, Lori? It's pretty old, is it not?
It says 138513, if you scroll down. I have a section that said it was adopted.
Really, council hasn't had any interest really in changing the overarching rules about this up to now. If this council would like to consider that, we could do that. This change would be if there is something in the state or county code or something that we need to make sure that we're up to date, and then we could revisit if council makes a change.
I would say, at that point, they're deleting it all the way around and they'll make the changes and then revisit it later to...
Yeah, I say, let's revisit it later. One, more so to educate ourselves more than anything, and, yeah, I mean, let's move on. I mean, I, we don't allow manufactured homes in Simonton, period. It's the RVs that are the problem, which are not manufactured homes. At least that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I add one thing to the discussion?
16-001.
And it was really a legal question. I understood that a HUD manufactured structure is really what we're talking about and that they can be, once we have a platted mobile home community, that's another thing, but I did want to point one thing out, we do have some mobile homes here. here. My understanding is they are grandfathered and that they were allowed to be replaced one time. I just want to point that out.
That's true. Yeah, they're over, they're not in the Valley Lodge. Okay, do we think, Philip, do we think we should go ahead and let that be for review since they are mentioning other codes, like the Texas Ministry of Code, Chapter 80? Or do you think we're okay to say defer until?
You could click it for review, but what I would do is I would leave it as it stands because it sounds like there needs to be a more comprehensive, like this isn't going to be like change this word, change this word, update this reference. It sounds like if there, if council is directing towards a more comprehensive review, then we're going to want to take more than just a kind of E-code look at it.
Okay.
I don't see, on its face, I don't see anything, you know, I don't see that you're causing any consternation because this is the published code and all it would be republishing the same code, which has the same restrictions as discussed, whether they're being followed or not. I mean, that's a different issue. But then taking a more comprehensive look and seeing if there's a way to manage it, we could do that bigger down.
Great. Thank you. Look at all those green check marks. We've worked hard.
Lori, did you remember to go back up to 12?
Oh, definitely.
Because you remember we skipped down to sixty six.
Let's see. I got all excited about addressing. Here we go. This is quarrying, mining within the corporate limits. They haven't been amended since 1991 and should be reviewed by someone familiar with their enforcement. There's nothing to enforce at this point. Are you happy to take your suggestion on that? Will you invest any additional time and resources on this one or?
Not necessarily prior to his being republished.
Okay.
Mining operations.
No, but with some of the changes there could be. What was, like Paul came pulling the sand out.
That's permitted through Texas Department of Parks and Wildlife, ERA.
TCQ, all that stuff.
Everybody's.
In Corps of Engineers. I'm sorry?
And TCQ and everybody, isn't it?
I think you're right.
Lori, I think you missed one.
It's permitted through Texas Department of Parks and Wildlife.
This is another one. Oil and gas activities.
That's true.
What'd you say?
I said let's drill.
The city of Simonton would like royalties on that, whatever.
We can work out a deal.
Anyway, they noted with very limited exception, municipalities don't have authority over this anyway.
Right.
So maybe we spend our money with Philip in the office reviewing things that have more beer than that. Right now, we can always change that if we change or decide. Okay. Fire code. I called the chief and I did not reach him to ask about what code version is current, but this is just saying that we are using the 2009 international fire code currently.
What's the most current?
And are there revisions needed?
Yeah, so the international codes in general, I believe the vast majority of them have a 2023 update. On most of what we're, if we want to do a general update to integrate all those international codes, I recommend 2021 because just like the latest iPhone, right? If you get it the day it comes out, there's going to be updates and revisions and things like that. And so they tend to be shifting sand for a while and trying to keep up with them. So 2021 is pretty settled. And that's a common practice to, you know, I've seen most cities at 2018 at this point, and that's a pretty comfortable range. But there is a, typically you do want to update the code references to more modern codes. And so I would recommend a full, like every article where it references the international whatever code, building code, occupied resident code, et cetera, et cetera, we update it to potentially a 2021 version.
So are you think, are you recommending that we do that now with E-code or that? Because I think we mentioned a couple of meetings ago that that's a project that was also recommended by Bureau Veritas for us to update all of our building codes. And we could just do it one fell swoop right now while we're changing things. But I have been on council before when there were members of the public who would like to speak on that because like maybe they're in the industry of building homes or renovating homes, and they would appreciate having an opportunity to put their, to give their input to council before we would make a decision on that.
Is that why you're making your suggestion?
Well, no. Additionally, according to the Local Government Code, updating of the International Building Code and International Residence, Residential Code requires a public hearing before it's updated, before the ordinance is updated. Well, and just as far as can't, so this process, and I got some more details, the changes we make in here are going to just result in them giving us in essence, an ordinance language to then pass an ordinance to update it. So like any edits made here are going to suddenly be the edit. We'll still need, so the ordinance will still be passed to update. So for something like updating building codes, that ordinance would require a public hearing. There's no special notice provisions. It's just your 72 hours, you know, but you have that sort of public hearing prior and then the reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So we could make the suggestion to update it to 2021, state laws and.
Right, and then.
Fire codes and whatnot. And then we're still going to have to get, we're still going to have to vote on it later.
Right, you still have the adoption, exactly. So nothing here is in essence being voted on to update. It's just saying, yes, it needs to be updated. And then that will trigger the process to work its way to an ordinance that isn't accepted by the city and then E-code will update at that point.
Part of this, the E-code project is that they will give us those ordinances.
Yes.
We'll get some approval from our legal counsel and make sure they like the wording. They'll generate all of those and give them to us. And that's when council will approve this in a public meeting with the.
I would say we update it to 2021 per his suggestion as well. I mean, I don't know how that affects people that actually end up going through those types of things and or what, you know.
We still have the opportunity to change your mind too. If they say, we can't live with that, but we could live with this, and council will decide, we can always just change that and bring it back to a later meeting. Could I ask this one now? Okay. Okay. We'll get some more of those here in just a minute. This next one is about outdoor burning and provides that when the county issues a burn ban, the city may implement and enforce the same ban.
Doesn't that happen?
I don't know about the Texas Health and Safety Code. Philip, you'll have to say if you think that's something we should defer.
Yeah, so it's with, because it's, exceptions, county fire marshals, non-toxic household trash may be burned during the outdoor burning ban during daylight hours in closed container, burn barrel. So the only thing I would have to check is if those exceptions, sorry, the exemptions that you have allowed have now become preempted by updates to state law. Like they may say, no, burn ban means burn ban. My guess is no, because I see like non-commercial cooking or eating devices. Probably grill out in your backyard.
I won't put it in non-commercial.
Oh, okay. Yeah, non-commercial. I would just have to verify that there's no preemption of exemptions.
Is there anything in there about the size of? How do I say this? There's some large burn piles within Valley Lodge. I would think that it would be a major hazard whether we're in a burn ban or not. Is, I mean, is there anything in there about that?
Restricting the size for a burn pile or anything?
We just say, well, we just say that it needs to, currently, we say that it needs to. Currently, we say it needs to be in an enclosed container. Any? Right here, any burning? Small amounts of non-toxic household trash can be burned outdoors in a closed, enclosed container, like a burn barrel with a screen on the top? All that kind of good stuff with the hose and.
This is what you just read. And I've read, or what I heard is that's what you could do while in a burn ban.
That's the exemption allowed during a countywide burn ban, correct? I don't see any language.
You're right about that.
I'm pretty sure the state superseded that, did they not, when they said the county is like the call? The county makes the call and says there's a countywide burn ban, you can't burn nothing?
Well, that's why I need, that's why I need to check to see if there's a superseding clause in the state or if the county has no issue with small exemptions. But as far as like.
Is there a list of items that have, that are not complete in E-code? So we can just look up the code on our website after this is over.
Thought we had to like accept the burn ban or something along those lines and then throw little signs down when the county did it and that was pretty much the.
Because we're municipality, we had jurisdiction.
I do, cool.
Over that. For years, Jim Hamill thought we had burn bans in place when we didn't.
This one is aerial luminaries. Anybody in violation of the provisions of the article? You can't sell them, distribute it, discharge it, or release them. And they're just asking if there are any revisions.
To fireworks? No.
No, this is aerial luminaries.
Chinese.
Oh, like lights?
At one point, they were doing that at the event center down here, and it was floating down to properties inside the city limits, and it was a fire hazard. So this was developed as a means to have some control over that.
It's a Chinese lumina? Is that what we're talking about?
Where you light the fire inside, let it go.
Yeah, okay.
It lands on your wood shingle roof if you still have one. I don't know.
You must have small daughters.
So what they're asking, do we have any revisions regarding the provisions or the penalties? I think the answer is no at this point.
If we're still not allowing it, then.
Did she ever go back after that one that you were talking about?
Yeah, she did. She got.
This one is technical requirements about design and construction standards for subdivisions. This is a lot larger than, this is something that we may have some changes once we are renegotiating an agreement or once we finish our, so new to that project, keep on the C-PAC. Keep wanting to say CIC because that's a word term. But I don't know that we have anything today unless council has some information about that.
But what's the, the general gist of this?
They're just saying this is very technical because it's about subdivisions.
Okay.
So have you viewed it? Do you have anything or development of subdivisions?
Okay, but what do they want?
Procedure for submission of plaits, things like that. So it all goes back to the CPAC like she's kind of saying.
Yeah, talks about street paving, sidewalk width and thickness, water system, minimum depth, valves, backfill, sanitary sewer systems, like drainage, et cetera. So, I mean, I would not want to speak on any of this as not being an engineer.
This was adopted in 2011. So it might merit some updating, but I don't know that we have a package of information for a certain section that we are ready to make updates on today.
Understood.
Let's make a note though.
That was the city council's answer to keep from having to implement zoning.
This was originally?
Yeah, that gave the city some protection. I think it was actually developed in 2009. We may revisit it in 2001.
Additional penalty on delinquent taxes on or after June 1st. And they're referring to the tax code, the references this makes to the tax code, saying that it refers to slightly different sections. Are they okay as they now read, or should they be revised to refer to the same section that's referenced in the code? So basically, this is just harmonizing the code in every, each place that it's referenced, it's the right code, and that all of the ordinances that pertain all refer to the same. So I think this one, for me, stays with Justin. I mean, sorry, still thinking Justin.
That's right. I'm Justin Light.
Justin Light. But that's obviously up to y'all.
I would say the same thing.
Give him this one. It'll be real tedious.
I'm worried I'm making my list of what.
Look at there, we're almost at the end of the list. This one regulates the use of the right-of-way by telecommunications providers. This law changed, changes a lot, especially as in the last few sessions. Local government code and utilities codes apply here. And I feel like this probably, unless you think we can resolve it right now, this is probably something that goes back to you for.
Specifically now.
Updates with the latest sessions. If I can open it.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll take a look and I'll make a note that if there's significant enough changes, we may prioritize that one.
Okay.
It really only restricts the city's right-of-way.
Chapter thirty, Article three.
Right.
Well, maybe two. On that one in particular. But I don't know if that was current.
I would think you would actually go into the.
What question?
Into Valley Lodge as well then.
That is thirty, Article zero zero two.
The way the word is, is it the city's.
Article three.
It is the city.
No, but it's not the city's right-of-way on there. Not where there's telecommunications paths. Those are the ditches and those areas are, but there's no telecommunications lines out there. Otherwise, we'd have fantastic internet and not have to deal with the.
Just the phone, not the stuff right up there.
There's phone lines instead.
Do they have phone lines?
I don't have them at my house, but there is, and it is all of that. It's actually on there.
And that bridle path, it's just right behind my house. I mean, it's just loaded all the way.
Is it really?
Yeah.
And it's kind of a combination. It's a bridle path plus an easy.
Lori, there was one above that that we missed. I was thinking there was one that just so I can celebrate the very last one.
Make sure we're right before we celebrate.
Celebratory attitude you got right there.
That's right.
I think I just closed it. This is the one about the tax code penalty, and we were going to refer that to Olson and Olson. Maybe I didn't type it in there, but I did mark it for. it for needs review. Let's add it.
I just saw an empty circle.
Yeah.
I think the ones with major use still have a circle.
Okay. Now I can celebrate on the last one.
Okay.
Oh, this is the big one.
Through traffic prohibited.
We changed that to just through cars, through traffic.
Somehow, I don't think that one's going to mess.
Lori, I just have a quick question. You know, Christie went through all that trouble to get the signs and stuff to put in Valley Lodge, no 18-wheelers and stuff. But there's a gentleman that lives in the neighborhood that has an 18-wheeler, and he's obviously pulling it in because he's parking it next to his house. Is that not, I mean?
What's prohibited is parking on public streets.
Public streets? That's the only thing?
So if he doesn't park it on the public street, there is no city ordinance that doesn't allow that at this point, to my knowledge.
Can I?
We could. Ask Justin Light.
Council wants to put something together. But the Valley Lodge, that's private drives then?
No.
I mean, you're on public roads.
It's public roads. You can't park it on the street.
So the city.
So it is still public roads, though?
Yes.
Right, to get there. To get there and drive it into your driveway.
So the petition was brought in, verified and all that. And so signs then could be posted in anywhere, but particularly in this roadway about not parking on public streets, which then it was requested, if we wanted to do that, that it could be signed so that the sheriff's office or other law enforcement could.
Take it in.
Right.
Take action.
So that says, oh, sorry. Go ahead. That just says prohibitions on particular streets. And are there any revisions necessary? What are the specific streets enabled in that code? If it even lists any, or does it just say in Simonton? Barnes is like, it's not, or Burns is like, it's not Barnes Road.
Well, that's what it says somewhere.
Now, Burns, are you having a problem now or you're worried about what's coming?
We have a, we have a problem now.
Okay.
That, that there's a ton of traffic that cuts through the board that stops.
Sure.
And not only that, they're speeding through.
Yeah.
And they're going to hurt somebody.
Well, it's a nice smooth ride.
Which is why.
Does it list that there even, or is it just that vague?
They'll under 32, tattooed to affected streets.
You know, I live on the streets, so I'll have to go with the speed.
Oh, it is on Barnes Road.
I don't.
Oh, hell, yeah.
They're the only road. So this is, this on Barnes Road is through trucks.
Yeah.
What Kelly's talking about is parking.
Certainly, but I didn't realize, I was going off of that definition. If it says only this road, I mean, to your point, it could say, you know, wagons, chism, whatever, and no through traffic to where it's going through the neighborhood. But it only lists your road, buddy. We still have the problem.
The thing is, y'all are going to have us through, I mean, you wouldn't have through traffic going like through Valley Lodge, but you do have it going where I live.
Yeah, certainly.
So the ordinance was passed at the residents on that road's request. Signs were put up so that it can be enforced by law enforcement. Now, they have to be sitting there to catch them.
Oh, yeah.
In order to do that, but it's a deterrent. And that's what's going on in Barnes Road with that. The one about parking on the street is just a separate matter, but similar topic. So what they're asking is, do we want to change that? Because it only mentions one road. I think the answer is no at this point. That's the only one that's.
We can keep that one for a minute. We'll add.
Demonstrated there is an issue and requested help from that.
I didn't realize that was such an issue over there. That sucks.
It specifically was when there was roadwork going on and the trucks, especially on I-10, when the trucks are coming down here and using this thoroughfare and it was going on in the intersection. Okay. I believe. We have tackled them all. So we've still got incompletes and need review, but that's because they need something. I have two on my list that maybe need to get unlocked just so that I can mark them complete.
Lori, not to make you go back, but at the very beginning, there was a couple of them regarding, I know we went over the city secretary one. We did not go over the city administrator one. I think that one might be a little bit particular. Right, it'd be, I want to say it was six something.
There's the city.
Right, right there. The Department of Health to be updated and then the city, and then we don't over those two, but keep going down just a tad. I want to say it was like one or two that maybe we skipped, maybe we didn't.
Two, tax zero zero five.
You mentioned two?
Appointment of a city administrator.
We went over the city secretary.
Well, that's the administrator is two zero zero five.
That's appointing the city administrator by the council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought there was a city secretary one that we missed. Either way, I was just looking for those little blank zeros.
The city secretary one was changing whether they could appoint or.
Deputy or something. Yeah, the one we talked about first off. I got you.
I got you. Okay. Well, thanks to the work outside of the meeting and everybody's willingness, we tackle this in one hour. It's a two. That's fantastic. So thank you, everybody, for that. And so I believe. Our item B is direction to the city attorney about the Ecode. I know that you made notes as we're going, but we should be able to pull a report out of this tomorrow morning after I get these two corrected that could show, give you a list.
Perfect.
Of the themes that we made notes on.
I gotta, I'm sorry. This is what happens when you wear two hats. Back to the fence and the pool stuff. There's a temporary or above-ground pool close to me with no fence anywhere on the property and a ladder attached to it as well. Can we not do something about this?
If there's any type of fencing whatsoever.
There's no fence on the property, period.
No.
So typically, what, what happens is someone emails or provides us with a complaint or request to review something like that.
Okay.
And then we look up the code, make sure we have the right information about what could or couldn't be done. And then the next action is taken. We either hire an inspector if we need that, we hire a code enforcement officer if we need that. Just kind of depends on what the need is at that point. So action could be taken, but somebody has to make the request unless council were to make a change in policy. But today, we don't go out searching for violations. Those are, if somebody makes a request or turns in a violation, then we work on it.
I think the state might stay in ground pools. Because you don't have that three-foot or four-foot wall. Of a pool. Is it any pool? Because that's the case. There's a lot of above-ground pools that don't necessarily have fencing. But I always thought it was in-ground pools that required that three-foot fencing because it is.
You can't, you really can't get insurance on your house if it's not the best. That's a big problem. You know, if you're, if you're getting insurance from especially like a different company, they sense, well, you have to look at your house, you know.
Yeah, but generally, they do that when you first buy your house.
That's correct.
So if you're in your home, let's say, a year, and you decide to put it in a above-ground pool, then.
That's right.
Nobody's the wisest.
No, you're right.
Unless you have somebody that rats you out.
Unless somebody filed a complaint.
A concerned neighbor.
Concerned neighbor.
On that note, our next item is adjournment to executive session. Let's take a five-minute break if anybody needs. Okay, on our agenda, item number four, reconvene into open session. We will take action regarding personnel matters, up to and including action on contract for city administrator. Do we have a motion?
The following motion. Motion to direct the mayor to withdraw the offer of employment to Danny Segundo for the position of city administrator. Do we have the motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item five takes us to adjournment. It is 7:12 PM. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.